Did you get greened on?
Okay, I call to order our special city council meeting workshop of January 19th. Uh, second item on the agenda is discussion, review, and possible action on ordinance number three, three, four, two. Dan, you've got five minutes.
That's about all I'm gonna take. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is a meeting where I'm gonna start with the it's in your guys' court, and I'm here to answer questions and, and, you know, have more discussion in that. The last one, or the one we were gonna have in December, we did not have. However, everybody was provided a hard copy of the ordinance and the changes, so I'm hoping that most of you have at least somewhat looked over it, read through it, or what. So like I said, at this point, I'm gonna kinda throw it to you, the council, or Leroy as well, to go over any specific issues you have, or areas that you want to talk about, and then go from there, and hopefully this, in this manner, we'll get things moving along and get to a point where we're all happy with the document and can get it to a, a adoptable timeframe. Uh, one thing I will say is, I've communicated some of my thoughts on different things from parking and other stuff. Uh, if that's a route you guys wanna go, I can have those, you know, revisions, and I can work on that. If it's not something that you guys want to delve into, uh, you know, that's fine, I understand. I think a lot of that has a great benefit, but it's definitely a huge change to what most communities would do, and especially in Oklahoma. Uh, but there are other communities moving that way, and, you know, and with regards to parking, uh, you know, I had indicated just eliminating minimum parking standards, uh, not having any, so we don't have to deal with that. Cause a lot of times, that's more of an issue in development than it is beneficial. And like I said, there's other communities that are moving towards that. Uh, it's definitely also something across the country, but like I said, those elements may be too much and that, but again, I'll leave that up to you guys, but again, here to answer any questions you have.
Didn't we stop at section six?
Uh, I believe we were going to somewhere there. We were getting to like the accessory dwelling units, I, I think was where we kinda were going page by page.
You want to work in the music industry, but aren't music...
Yeah, but I know Leroy has some that kinda go back to areas we already covered.
Go back.
Yeah.
Music publisher, concert.
You wanna start with that?
Never you all ready?
Yeah.
If Leroy starts with that, brings it up to date of where we're at to section six, that will at least get his questions going. Okay, what do you think?
Yep, let's do that.
Uh-oh, Leroy's got a power cord back.
Can I get you to get the lights?
Yes.
I have a couple...
This is a good thing.
I have a couple slides.
Oh, nice.
This is ones in general. We only redo the ordinance ever twenty years or more, and there's some development trends I think we should consider while we're amending. And for example, food truck court. We've got an ordinance for independent food trucks to park different places, but as far as a court that's built just for food trucks. And the two slides on the far left are examples. We have a entity in town that's bought property and has an interest in doing a food court where they rotate out the trucks, uh, but it would be adjacent to their business. In visiting with Dan, our zoning ordinance, we don't have provisions for that. And he said, "We'll have to amend the ordinance." Well, heck, we're amending it right now, so we might as well look at it. And, uh, as, uh, Councilman Long brought up, there's also a lot of things being done with shipping containers. And if you look at, uh, second pictures to the right, uh, top and bottom, I give examples of shipping containers being used for retail and office space. May not be something we wanna go, but at least I think we ought to look at trends in the development world, and do we want to encourage that kind of development? I mean, it does provide opportunities for some re- small retail shops, small offices. Uh, so, do we wanna look at shipping containers for retail office space? And then if you go to the third set of pictures, top and bottom, uh, shipping containers for housing, multifamily, and single. Um, then finally, tiny homes. Uh, some of them are more permanent, some of them are on wheels. Do we want to look at that trend and, uh, address that in our current zoning ordinance that we're amending? There may, and, and Councilman Long probably knows by far more of the trends in this arena than I do, but are there other commercial residential development trends that occur in other places where communities are growing that we wanna position ourselves to accommodate and encourage that type of growth? Uh, so that's something I think we ought to do, is take a step back as we're doing that. Do we want to look at any of these opportunities while we're doing this ordinance?
Sure. And, and actually, this is a perfect segue into kinda what I was saying, and I would love to see a lot of that. Uh, cause like Leroy said, a lot of this is gonna help for the future with the residential development, commercial development, and as I indicated, especially on that other line, commercial residential development trends, I think we also need to look, like I said, at the parking standards and a lot of that. Uh, those can be somewhat of an impediment to development, uh, cause again, we're putting arbitrary numbers out there to say, "You have to have X parking." Another thing that I had indicated is, you know, and this goes with tiny homes and that, we really need to look at diversifying our housing options in this community, uh, in that. You know, I had indicated that I think even in the Guthrie proper overlay, that that might be an opportunity to allow for two dwelling units, one or two dwelling units outright. So on your lot, if you wanna put a duplex, you can put a duplex. If you wanna put a single family. You have the design character and the design criteria in there to make sure that character's held, but we increase the units that are in these areas, and more importantly, the housing diversity that is out there in our community, especially on the rental side. So, I, I couldn't say, you know, I, I can, just like Leroy said, this is the time to do all of that, and even to the extent of, uh, we talked about briefly at the planning commission, accessory commercial units. They work in a similar fashion as dwelling units, but in the, just like the name, they're used for commercial purposes. It's a, it's kinda that, uh, good progression from a home occupation, but not yet to a commercial building in the downtown somewhere. It gives that in-between to where the entrepreneurship and all that could flourish. So, again, I, I think these are all things that we, we really need to think strongly of, so we don't have to come back two, three, four times in the next few years to try to accommodate this. So, thank you.
I know this is more arena that Councilman Long probably knows more about than I do. I just would defer to him if he had some ideals on this.
I think that all of, I mean, what you've outlined up here are definitely growing trends from tiny homes to containers to, um, anything that is, is small in nature. It seems people are adapting and utilizing those. Um, I mean, I just, um, did a transaction, um, where they had taken, um, essentially one of those two-story, um, tough sheds and made it into a second, uh, dwelling in their backyard for like a, I don't know, a granny shack or whatever you wanna...
Like an accessory dwelling.
Yes, yes. So I know that people are utilizing those things in order to, um, have secondary or other livings, um, on their lots. I know that, um, for example, you know, the Rops have the depot. They've got several acres there. I know there's been discussion, um, that, you know, in the future, they'd like to have other, uh, opportunities there, whether it be containers or, uh, rail cars, and all of those are obviously, you know, smaller type, um, pieces that are either on wheels or containers that are small that are, are moved in, that need to be looked at for, um, other types of establishments.
So if we did this one, we'd have to agree that these are things that would fit our community. Where would they fit? What zoning districts would you allow? And then what would be the design standards? You just don't wanna take a shipping container and set it down in its raw form. You'd wanna have some standards where, you know, it has an appearance that matches the, the different neighborhoods that you're gonna put into. So staff just needs to have guidance from the city council. These are directions that you wanna explore or not. Uh, as we go through this discussion, you'll have to answer it right now. The second slide, and then I'm gonna go sit down, cause I got some questions, uh, that I got in my book. But, on the second slide, I just wanna make sure we all understand, on prefabricated homes, a prefabricated home is a term used to describe any building or dwelling that is manufactured offsite in a home building facility and then transported, uh, to the home or building site. Prefabricated homes differ depending on the codes they follow. They may all three look just alike, but it's the codes that they follow in construction that distinguishes one from the other. And there's basically three basic types of prefabricated homes. A mobile home is a home built prior to the 1974 National Mobile Home Construction and Safety Act. They're built on permanent chassis with wheels attached. They do not meet the HUD standard, and they also do not meet the National Building Code for our community. The next group up is a manufactured home, and it is a home built to conform to the 1976 HUD manufactured home construction and safety standards, usually called the HUD code. And again, they're built on permanent chassis with wheels attached, but they, neither category one or two meet the, our adopted National Building Codes for our community. So they're a lesser standard than the stick-built homes. The third category, modular home. Modular homes are built to conform to all state, local, or regional building codes that apply based on the final location of the home, just like site-built homes. Modular homes are placed on a permanent foundation. Modular homes are priced the same as their onsite-built counterparts, and home loans for modular homes are the same as site-built homes. One and two, because they don't meet the local building code, you can collapse those into one group. As a matter of fact, mobile home, you don't have many of those around anymore because they were built before seventy-four. But in our draft of the rezoning, there are places that we combined or collapsed manufacturing home with modular homes. I don't think we can do that, because when we put manufactured modular in the same category, we got one type that doesn't meet our building code and one type that does. And we'll go through that, cause I think there's a few places where we stipulated that.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to go through that.
And, and now we'll start at the beginning and go through some questions.
So, just for a quick follow-up question to your deal, Leroy, are, are we saying that, uh, manufactured homes of any sort are currently not allowed in Guthrie, and we're not gonna allow them in Guthrie?
No. Right now, they're by a special use permit only, anywhere in the community.
In mobile home parks.
Yeah, or in a mobile home park.
But then you can't just put them in...
Right, no, I get that.
A modular home because it meets...
Right, you can't put it in.
And as long as it meets all the, uh, design criteria and stuff, it can go anywhere than a site-built home.
And the modular home, typically, that's the one that comes in two pieces, trucked in and put together.
Yes.
When it doesn't come on a permanent chest.
Right. But, yeah, the key is it meets all applicable building codes, and then will usually meet all the design criteria, if there are any which we have. Uh, and Leroy may have found a couple places. I thought I got all of the areas and tried to change it to where, as Leroy said, I have the definition there, mobile and manufactured basically combined, and then there's a modular. Currently, as I said in our code, a mobile or manufactured home is a special use permit anywhere in the community unless you're in an actual mobile home-zoned, uh, property, which we don't have any right now. But a modular home, we added in there, but again, that would be a permitted use, just like a single family or onsite-built home. And so if I missed a couple areas, uh, I'll correct that, but in the updated code, that's the intent.
So that was my next question. Do we not have any right now because nobody...
We have some area, yeah, we have some areas that have a grouping, if you wanna say, of mobile homes. There's some way down south off, I think, Forest Hills Road over there, uh, in that. There's a couple others, but as an actual designated zoning for mobile modern, we don't have any currently. We have the zoning district, we just haven't had any property zoned to it.
So it's not that we wouldn't allow it?
No, right.
That nobody came forth with a business plan to put it...
Right. And like I said, if somebody does, you know, want a mobile or manufactured home, they just go through a special use permit process, cause as Leroy said, we don't necessarily want those just to pop up anywhere, uh, in that, but it isn't necessarily prohibited.
Right, okay.
Okay, you ready for my questions?
Yes.
Yep.
We can turn the lights back on now.
And I think we all have the same document with the same page number, so we should be good to go.
Hope so.
My first question is on, if you look at the page numbers of the agenda package...
Oh, boy.
Page ten.
Oh, so we're switching up on this one?
Yeah.
It's a little bit off.
Yeah.
A bit different.
It's page four of Dan's document.
Thank you.
And it's page ten of the agenda packet.
Adult uses.
Yeah, exactly.
Article two definitions. Um, on item C, under 1.1 definitions, it says, "The planning director has final administrative authority to determine interpretation or usage of terms using, used in the zoning code." I would respectfully suggest, to make it clear, that we inserted at the beginning, "Subject to appeal, the planning director has final..."
That's true, cause it can be appealed to the Board of Adjustment.
And then on accessory dwelling unit?
Yes.
If you look at, uh, page forty of the agenda packet, or page thirty-four of Dan's document, depending what's your document you're looking at, if you look at permitted uses, uh, accessory, uh, dwelling units, you could put those in any of the four, uh, R-E, R-1, R-2, and R-3 residential codes, correct?
Yes.
And then, uh, mixed use on page forty-seven, I believe you can put it in... It's be page forty-one if you're looking at Dan's document.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, there we go.
Trickin' us, Leroy, trickin' us.
Forty-one.
Trickery.
Yeah, that's it, forty-one.
Let's see. I was thinking we allowed it in, uh, mixed use, but maybe we don't.
No, I didn't put it in mixed use, cause it isn't traditionally something you see in mixed use.
Okay. And they're not allowed in the central business district?
Correct, accessory dwelling units.
Okay. And then on page forty, or on page, uh, seventy-four...
Which is?
The standards, sixty-eight in your document.
Oh, okay.
Stop that.
Yes.
On, uh, L-B, uh, it says, "An accessory dwelling unit is not allowed if the property is already developed with an accessory commercial unit," and we struck...
Oh, yeah. That was a carryover that I forgot we had in there, so that can be deleted right now unless we go look at ACUs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and the table we looked at, I'll go get to that again, but it was in the...
Yeah, no, I'll take that out of the table.
And then in E, it says, "An accessory dwelling unit may be rented but cannot be used for residential short, short-term rentals as defined and outlined in section eighteen, which is on page one twenty-four, if you wanna look at it."
So because you don't want it to turn into a neighborhood motel, right?
Correct. It cannot be sold separately, uh, separate of the primary lot or home. So, uh, who can it be rented to and for how long, is my question. We don't really define that.
No, because there's no limitation. Honestly, it, it, it can function, the intent was to have it function, uh, as a true accessory dwelling unit. So if you wanna put an accessory dwelling in it in your property and just rent it out to anybody for how long, you know, a year, two, three, whatever, you could do it. If you wanna have it for a family member, uh, whatever, uh, you know, there's no limitation per se. It would function as another dwelling unit, just like the name. That kinda goes back to what we're talking about, tiny homes or other stuff, is when you're looking at accessory dwelling units, if you start to put so many regulations on it, just prohibit it. I mean, it, you get to the point where it's not functional anymore. And, you know, that goes back to what I was saying about even housing diversity, we, you know, in the community and that, uh, you know, because obviously it's accessory, it's going to have a certain size limitation, eight hundred and fifty feet, square feet max by current code.
But Dan, it says cannot be used for residential short-term rentals. What is that?
Well, that's basically like an Airbnb. That's what that's saying, cause that goes back to that section. But you can rent it long-term, so again, if you have a friend who's looking for a place to live and, you know, can't afford a thousand dollars a month, a single-family residence, you can rent them their accessory dwelling unit, and they can live there for however long they want.
So you can rent it to anybody?
Yep.
For an extended period of time?
Yes.
But you just can't rent it short-term like an Airbnb?
Right.
Well, what's, we're section eighteen.
I'm not sure I understand the purpose of that one.
The purpose of...
Well, technically speaking, I mean, thirty day, once you reach thirty days, you no longer have to collect hotel motel tax.
Yeah, that's the big difference.
And so at thirty days, you could essentially rent it for thirty days or longer.
Yeah.
I see what you're getting at.
Yeah, but I was gonna say, and, and that's really the, yeah, uh, and, and I'm sorry, but yeah, that's the biggest distinction with the rentals and that, is if you're doing short-term rentals and that, you have possible bed taxes, sales tax, and that, whereas you're renting it beyond that, you fall into just a regular rental.
So would it help if we clarified that, uh, may be rented for periods of thirty days or longer?
I mean, I think that that would be more understood by the...
Yeah, we can put that in there. That's not a big deal. Cause that's the intent.
I think most of the population's gonna build it for their parents or kids.
No, you're right, yeah. It's a growing trend, but again, it does allow another housing opportunity, even if they don't, for, you know, people in the community. So we'll just add for greater, the thirty days or more.
Okay. I just wanna make sure, because we say it can't be short-term...
Right.
That we...
No, the intent was to allow, yeah, long-term, yeah.
Well, you've got it in section eighteen, too, under minor residential short-term rental.
Yeah, but that's specific to that type of use, and we'll get to that, but yeah.
References this use?
Oh, yeah, that you can't do it.
Right.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And then on page twelve of the agenda packet, page six of Dan's document, depending on which one you're looking at, automobile and truck repair. This one is housekeeping. If you look in the red, the first three bullet points, general repair, rebuilding, or reconditioning of engines, motor vehicle, or trailers. If you look up above, that is one phrase, and we put it as three bullets. It's actually one phrase, not three bullets.
Oh, okay. Got it.
What?
Basically, it just says, "General repair, rebuilding, or reconditioning of engines, motor vehicles, or trailers."
Putting that on one bullet.
That's how it should read.
One bullet.
Yeah. It got broken in three bullets rather than one sentence.
It'll mean the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it should be one phrase. On battery service, one, two, three, four, five up, battery service, charging, replacement, but including repair or rebuilding, do you admit, was that to be but not including?
Probably excluding.
Yeah, for batteries.
Cause you're not gonna build batteries.
No.
So, so but not including?
Right.
Repair or rebuild.
Yeah.
On vehicle washing, including mechanical car wash and steam cleaning, if you look at the next page, page thirteen, we also have automobile wash or laundry. Are those meant to be two separate things, but...
Oh, man, you lost me.
The next page at the top, automobile wash and laundry.
That's the laundry word.
I think that's, that's not being...
Oh, yeah, that was one of those that, that was from the original code. I see what you're saying, two different definitions. Yeah, that's kinda weird.
So you're suggesting we scratch laundry? Well, laundry would be drive your car in and it goes on and on through the process, right?
Yeah. That was one of those definitions that's been in there forever, but it is kind of a quirky definition.
But it could be combined with the first one instead of having...
Yeah, no, you're right. Like you said, just combine, combine that, yeah. Without, no need to have it as separate.
Okay. On page thirteen, that we were just on with the washroom, uh, for page seven in your document, Dan.
Yep.
Brew pub.
Yep.
If we look at, uh, taproom on page thirty...
Uh-huh.
But not thirty in this, but are thirty.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Those, a brew pub and a taproom are very similar in definition.
We can just combine them.
Yeah, why wouldn't we?
On the taproom, uh, it, it does say one, can purchase and/or consume.
About food.
Does that mean in a taproom, you can purchase it to go? This on page twenty.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm reading it again. Oh, there, I guess there is somewhat of a difference, cause it, it's basically distinguishing, and I think it, it has to do with like a distiller or brewer, where the taproom actually designates an area where you can either consume or purchase it, whereas, like right now, if you walk into the distillery, they can't sell you anything. But if they create a taproom in that per state law, that's an area then where that, uh, liquor can be consumed or even sold. So that, yeah, so it's, and that's exactly what Prairie Wolf is doing with their front, that special use permit will be coming, but that's why they're creating a taproom in the front, to where you can actually then go to their place and drink or even buy it, where currently you can't. And so that's essentially what it's saying is a taproom. And a brew pub is, is more where it, you know, it, it's probably the same.
My understanding previously is a brew pub only distribute, only produces enough for their own distribution there.
Generally.
Not that they are also wholesaling to other places.
Yeah.
Where a taproom, they can be wholesaling their product and selling it out to liquor stores and other locations. So you're getting a taste of something...
Yeah.
So you need to...
Yeah, I think you need to...
A brew pub, you're not gonna go to the liquor store and buy that beer. It's not...
Right.
See, my interpretation of a brew pub is you only can buy what they produce on premise.
Correct.
Yeah.
But they can sell it out wholesale.
So you couldn't have any other craft beers on sale?
Maybe they can, I just, that's not been my experience.
So, so you could not buy craft beers that they didn't produce, uh, on tap then?
Well, yeah, you can, because there's places in Oklahoma City that do that.
And probably it's cause they don't wholesale.
So I would think both of those, you would be able to buy, uh, craft beers that were brewed at other locations, not just, you're just not, cause you're gonna have more than one beer on tap, right?
Correct.
Right.
So you just wanna make sure that we don't limit it to just the beers that they're producing onsite. They can bring in other craft beers and put it on tap as well.
Yeah. And, and what I could do is, is a lot of that is, just like the taproom, it falls under state law. So what I can basically do is mess with the verbiage to say as, you know, state law would allow, cause we're not trying to be any more restricted by any means in that regard.
Okay. Um, and then it says contiguous to a small brewer. Do we have that defined anywhere? What's a small brewer? We just go...
Where does it say that?
On page seven. On brew pub.
You know, I'll have to look, cause there was... Somewhere, unless it got taken out... somewhere, unless it got taken out. Because I did have somewhere what distinguished that, because again, it goes to the number of gallons that you produce. What distinguishes a small to basically your, your large scale.
Microbrewery.
Oh, maybe that's where I had it under.
You have, it's limited to fifteen thousand-
Yeah, that was it. Yeah, microbrewery.
But, but when you say small brewer and brew pub, that's not, there's no definition what small brewer is.
Well, okay. I'll have to kind of massage that, because the intent was more of a microbrewery.
So all I would ask is brew pub on page seven, and tap room, and microbrew, we go back and make sure, there are three very closely related ones.
And, and the microbrewery was to be where, you know, what you typically see in the, in the downtown now, or, you know, whether OKC. A macrobrewery or the large scale is, you know, like a Coors, you know, that you see in normally in an industrial area. So that was the way to kind of distinguish those, so we don't get somebody that wants to open a true large-scale brewery in the middle of the downtown and take a whole block or something. We were looking more at your brew pub, microbrewery. So I'll, I'll play with those a little bit.
And just so people don't get the idea that I hang out at these places.
I thought maybe you were gonna be opening them.
On social occasions. But most of those, all of them that I've been to, not only do you have what's produced onsite, you can also have on tap beers that are produced on it. And I just want to make sure it's clear that you can do that. On page ten, dwelling to family always confuses me, and this is not something you've changed, it always confuses me in our existing ordinance. Is a dwelling to family on page ten, is that two single-family dwellings on the same lot, or is that a duplex?
No, that's essentially what it's saying, is, again, it goes down to the dwelling unit. So a dwelling, uh-
Either, it sounds like to me.
Yeah. And, and I can kind of go with that. The intent is obviously the number of dwellings, which is two. And, and to me, whether it's attached or detached is rather relevant, because it, again, it goes back to the dwellings. So we can put that two-family dwelling, attached or detached type of thing, because-
That's the only place I know that we allow, other than the now, what I call the mother, motherland quarters, is the only place we allow two residences on the same lot.
Well, well, yeah.
With the exception of the accessory dwelling.
Yeah, I mean, you could only do a two-family dwelling on a multi-family lot. You can't do it on a single-family lot. I'd like that, but-
But what about your accessory dwelling?
No, that's, yeah, that's, and again, the key to that is it's an accessory, so there's limitations on its size. With two single families, if you have a large enough property, you could build two eighteen-hundred square foot, you know, on, on an R-two lot or, or that, whereas the accessory is just that. It's limited by size to be accessory and remain accessory.
I, that definition just always confuses me.
It is kind of confusing, and I'll probably massage that a little bit, because, yeah, it, it really is meant to be like an-
So if you had two single-family dwellings on the same lot, if they were going to do a lot split and sell them, each lot would have to be a conforming lot, legal lot?
Absolutely.
Okay, on page twenty-three. We have mobile home, and then if you go-
Is that not on this?
Hold on, yeah, I was gonna say, that must be-
Page seventeen.
We have mobile manufactured home.
On page seventeen?
Yeah. Because it, because I took out what was there before, so it's hard to see, but it actually says mobile manufactured home, and then I completely rewrote it, so all of the red is what's new.
Okay. Mine, it just says mobile home.
Oh, yeah, no, because in, in, yeah, I don't know why.
On this one, it's slash manufactured.
Yeah. Because that's why I was saying, is I combined it back to a mobile manufactured home, much like you have up there.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we have a separate modular home, which-
We're combining mobile home and manufactured home.
Yeah.
See, mine didn't say that. Mine said mobile home.
Maybe you have an old version. I thought I gave you the updated version, so.
Oh, you're trying to keep me on the boat.
And you're actually looking at a paper cut.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So far, everything jived except that part, so I don't know.
So on page eighteen, where it says mobile home park and mobile home subdivision, is manufactured added to those?
Oh, I can make sure it is, because, yeah, because it's mobile manufactured dwelling units, it says in there. The mobile home, under mobile home subdivision, under mobile home park, it just says mobile homes, but I'll add manufactured to that. So it's combined like the definition.
Okay. Then if we go to page twenty-five.
Our twenty-five or your twenty-five?
Your nineteen.
Yeah, nineteen. We're about six-page difference.
Plan unit development. It says, the second sentence in red there, under plan unit development, as a type of development and as a regulatory process, the plan unit development is subject to special review procedures, and once approved, it becomes a supplemental zoning classification. To me, that reads like it's, it's on zoning district. And, and it, I wonder if the word overlay might be better again than classification.
We could, I can tell you that what that's saying is that generally on a zoning map, you would designate it, for instance, like the one that's going for Mission Hills. It would go from R-one to R-one P D or P U D. And so even by looking at a zoning map, somebody can already see, okay, this has some special provisions, because it's not the typical R-one. Because the next sentence says, it is not intended to serve as a separate zoning classification and cannot be used to introduce a use into the area that is blah, blah, blah. But I can put overlay, I mean, that's-
But if you read those two together, the, the first one says it becomes a supplemental.
Yeah.
The next sentence says it, it is not intended to be a separate. So they kind of-
Yeah, and we can just put overlay. Because either way, it will be designated on a zoning map to show that it's slightly different than a typical zone property.
So your supplemental was like a P U D?
Yeah, because like I said, literally on a zoning map, it'll say R-one slash P U D.
The underlying zoning never changes.
Right, exactly.
You're doing an overlay on it, it's special exceptions.
Yeah.
But the underlying zoning does change.
Right. But usually, it also show it on a zoning map, so again, when somebody's looking at a property, they know there's other restrictions that apply to that. It's just not your stand-up, you know, your typical R-one or C-two.
The other question I have on that same thing, you can only do things that's permitted as a matter of right. What about the few things that are permitted by special use permit? Could you introduce any of that?
Yeah, actually, yeah, that, that should be changed, because again, that was the intent, but like you said, as it reads, it sounds like a permitted use. Because again, the whole idea is, is if you're in a single-family area, you can't use a P D to basically overlay it to allow multi-family zoning. Or the same if you're in a commercial, to allow industrial uses.
You could either do what's permitted, or what is, what could be-
Under special review or special use permit, yeah.
Either one of those kinds.
Yeah, and I'll change that.
Okay. On page twenty, your page twenty.
Our page twenty.
Twenty-six, if you're looking at the agenda package. Recreation facility.
Yes.
If you look at, it has racquetball, swimming and weight training, and that is also included, I believe in page, let me find it for your odds.
Oh, under the health, and, I don't know, I think I know where you're going.
It's included under health as well.
Yeah, the health and fitness centers.
On page twelve, health and fitness center also uses as swimming pool and weight training and racquetball. So how do you distinguish if it's got swimming and weight training? Is it a recreational facility, or is it a health and fitness center?
Good question. I think, by the way, it's set up, either is allowed in the same district, so, but I'll, I'll look at recreation facility, so it doesn't conflict.
Scraping the entire project.
Then right below that, on page twenty, on residential accessory buildings.
Yes.
Says the following are examples that are inclusive of but not limited to, and you have garage and carport. Would that be detached garage and detached, because if they're attached, they're not accessory buildings, are they?
No, right, because, and, and that comes from our existing, I think I had it in red, because it's new to the zoning district. But actually, our accessory ordinance, one of the issues it had is it considered attached garages after the initial build as accessory, which I'd never heard of or seen in my entire life. But it was in our ordinance. Yeah, that's now gone, so it's, it's a non-issue.
So here, the, those would be detached garage?
Yes, yes, these are all detached. Because if it's attached, it's part of the primary, and it's not an accessory use.
On page twenty-one, a rooming house, let's see, that's the one where you do not provide food, right?
Hmm.
Lodging only. And it has twenty persons.
Just lodging.
And twenty persons. But then if you look at page thirteen.
Is a rooming house a hostel?
Honestly, these are all that were there, that's part of the existing code.
What page are you on, on thirteen, Lee Roy?
Uh, that would be your page.
Because I think we even have maybe boarding house in here as well?
Yes, on page-
Yeah, boarding house, yeah.
But page seven, a boarding house that you can, other than a hotel, you can provide food and lodging, and it's not exceeding twelve, but on the rooming house, it's not exceeding twenty. Why two different numbers?
I have no idea. It's in the existing code, and I honestly didn't pay that much attention to it.
It doesn't say anything about not providing food on page-
I mean, from my end, I-
It says lodging only.
Yeah.
But one of them, one of them is-
Right.
Not exceeding twenty people, and the other one where you provide food.
Well, how do you define bed and breakfast?
Well, that again, is from the existing code, and there it says a commercial establishment or with twelve or less units for rent that provides a combination of overnight lodging, off-street parking and breakfast for a fee. Any such establishment that has more than twelve units for rent to guests shall be considered to be either a motel or hotel. That's existing code.
But it's almost the same definition as boarding house.
Well, basically, a rooming and a boarding house is distinguished by saying it's not an actual hotel motel.
But the board, rooming house says it can be considered defined as a hotel.
Oh, does it?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, it says if it has more than twenty persons.
Yeah.
More than twenty persons shall be defined as a hotel or a restaurant.
If it's less than that-
But if it's a bed and breakfast, it can only be more than, it's more than twelve. I don't know.
That leads me to another question. If you look at motel, it is based on twelve or more sleeping rooms, but when you use, in the rooming house, it says, a building which has condition for more than twenty persons shall be defined as a hotel. So some places we say persons, some places we say rooms. And those may not be-
I can look those over. Like I said, those are all in the existing code, so I, but, right, but I was gonna say, obviously, there's some conflicting information there, so we need to combine. To me, they're all kind, well, like a rooming house, boarding house is kind of the same use. But what, what's the magic number? I don't know. If it's twelve, is it twenty? I don't know.
Well, the number is not, it's one place we use persons, another place we use rooms.
Oh, right. But one says twenty and the other says twelve, I don't know. Yeah. I'll, I'll kind of look that over and see.
Combining, can't you just make it a boarding house?
Yeah, but I'll probably put an, probably put it for twelve or less, because in even the bed and breakfast, it says if you get more than twelve, you're a hotel motel. So with the boarding, rooming, we'll do the same thing, twelve or less. Anything more is a hotel motel. That way, we're consistent.
What's a little block building that's got four apartments in it?
A four-plex.
Four apartments?
Yeah, because again, the, the distinction-
Even if it is tip, even short-term stuff?
No, right, because the distinction there too is also if you have true dwelling units versus rooms for rent. You know, because as, as, I almost forgot your name, James said, you know, like a hostel. You know, it's usually a big building with maybe rooms or areas for a bed or whatever, so it isn't dwelling units. You know, you can accommodate a number of people. Where again, if you get in a building and you have four actual separate living areas, that's usually a dwelling in that. So again, it could be a dwelling unit here or a rooming. So there is, there is, is a difference. It sounds confusing, but there's a difference between dwellings and rooms.
Well, it is confusing, I think that's what we're talking about.
No, right, but I'll, I'll fix all that up, so it's consistent. Yeah.
And, and some of this is not Dan's doing, some of this is the old, but if we fix it, we might as well.
Absolutely, yeah.
My next question's on page twenty-six.
Page twenty-one, our page?
No, twenty-six, your page.
I was gonna say, I think this time we're on.
I'm trying to get your page.
Okay.
Of the RE residential estates, which-
Yes.
We get to later, I think, can be as small as one acre. There's currently no land zoned, is RE residential estates, correct?
That is correct.
So if you want it, your property zoned that way, you would have to come in and apply every zone?
Yes.
What's the benefit of doing that?
Uh, animal privileges. That's one of the big benefits.
Then R-two, which used to be general residential districts, you created R-three now.
Mm-hmm.
And basically, you took what was R-two and split it into two categories.
Yes. But as the R-two is, it has functioned, and even the way our current code is set up, it functions more like a limited multi-family in that. So it really isn't going to change much of the built environment. The R-three does allow for your true, you know, six buildings, three, four stories each, high-density, twenty acres per, you know, that.
I understand. Only problem, dividing. My question is, okay, if you have one of those multi-family residentials now-
Yeah.
And it's in R-two.
Yes.
Does it become non-conforming at that point, because it's not in the correct zoning, or how are we gonna look at it?
Well, yeah, it'd be legal non-conforming, but honestly, I'm not sure we have any. Because most of the ones we have, because we had kind of density limitations built in, given lot sizes, so the only one that might fall in is the one south of town, off a division. But everything else is gonna still fall fine with the R-two, even density-wise. Because the recent, the ones over by the water tower, I forget, it's like, I think they, some of those care facilities over there, in that, they fall in with the, even the limited multi-family.
If there is one, and it's not conforming, if they're going to expand it or stuff, then-
Yeah, we just rezone it, yeah.
Okay. Public facilities, that one confuses me a little bit on that same page. Why did we create a new zoning for public facilities?
One of the big differences, I guess, is with the public faci, well, currently, if we do like city hall in an R-one, technically, we have to follow the R-one zoning regulations, as far as setbacks, lot coverage, those type of things. Having a true public facilities, it does two things. One, it designates, obviously, it's a public property facility. But then the development regulations would be similar to what we see in the commercial area. And so like a city hall or a fire station wouldn't have those setbacks and lot coverages and that. So it might, makes it much easier to develop some of the traditional public facilities in that. So it's, it's a twofold thing. Parks can be in it, in that, and, and even the schools, and so a lot of those that are traditional public would have its own zoning. And most codes have that, and, and it's largely on the development end. And most codes have that, and, and, and it's largely on the development end.
So, again, if you have a public facility that's in one of the other zonings as a special use permit, is it now non-conforming?
Yeah.
So if you're going to make any adjustments or changes to it, you'd have to rezone it.
Yeah.
The other question that we'll get into later is, under the residential utilities, you have taken that out as something permitted in residential. How do you do utilities in a subdivision if you can't do utilities in a residential?
You still can. I, I, I guess we could put it in there, but, you know, having streets and easements and utilities, by the fact that you planted utilities, we don't need a land use table to say, oh, you can put utilities in there, uh, in that. It, it's all by the subdivision process and by the, you know, it, it's just not a.
But in your definition of what goes in public facilities, you include utilities?
Oh, okay, I'll have to look at that. And I think what I, yeah, and what I meant by utilities was, was the true, like a building, like if you had a public.
I understand.
Yeah, yeah.
But I just don't make sure that somebody interprets that.
I got it.
That when you do a plat, you're going to have utility easements in there.
Yeah.
And we cross all those out. On page twenty-nine. You have manufactured slash modular home.
Mm-hmm.
Is permitted.
No, see.
Mobile home slash manufactured.
Yeah, and like I said, I, for whatever reason, you didn't get the updated version. I thought I gave it to you, but.
He's tricking you. It's trickery.
Yeah. On mine, it has mobile, manufactured, still special use permit, and then modular of permitted use.
Okay.
Yeah, because like I said, the, the mobile home, manufactured home currently is special use anywhere.
Modular home is permitted.
Yeah.
A1, A2.
Yeah, and in the residential.
And mobile home slash manufactured is special.
Special use permit, correct.
That's not the way it reads in my book.
Okay.
I mean, mine shows manufactured slash modular home.
Yeah.
So yours is the same as mine?
Oh, you're looking online, right?
I'm looking at the, what was given in the packet.
Yeah, this is the difference.
I thought that was this one.
Apparently, what you handed out, because I threw away what you handed out, and you just thought was in the packet. So what you put in the packet is not what you handed out.
I'll check that.
See, we got to make sure we keep things copeset.
Yeah.
Because manufactured modular, in my opinion, they shouldn't go together.
Correct.
No, they don't, right.
They don't, when they.
Because mobile home, manufactured are one, mobile separate, or, or modular separate.
But if you look at what was in our agenda package, it's not changed.
Yeah, that's correct, okay.
So we need to make sure whatever.
Make sure I give you a copy of what I have, yeah.
See, and then down at the bottom on page twenty-nine, all the easements and stuff, you cross those out. So I take it that you're saying that it's a given, we don't need to show that you could do all those in residential, or anybody too.
Right.
At the bottom. And then the same thing on thirty, you strike in all of the permitted uses for electricity, cable, water, sewer, electric. So you're saying it's a given, it doesn't have to be spelled out.
Right.
Just common sense.
Yes.
On page thirty? Is it covered somewhere else on footnote C that you deleted, that a beauty shop in A1 and A2?
I don't have footnote C here. Yep.
That footnote, uh, is it covered somewhere else that we deleted?
Yeah, it's, uh, well, there's, uh, two things I did. It's, it's a formatting thing. If you look in each section, I took the table footnotes, because they're probably the most commonly not viewed missed portion. So I created in each a section that says specific district regulations. So if you look under specific district leg, uh, regulations, which is 1.2, it has all of that information.
Which work?
Twenty-two.
No, it, it, yeah, on twenty-eight. And, and that's throughout every zoning district. Uh, because like I said, the problem with table footnotes and all that is they don't always get looked at and missed over.
What, uh, what page?
Oh, so on page twenty-eight, if you go to like section one, ag districts, there's a new section 1.2, which is specific district regulations.
Yes.
That has that same information. It just puts it in an area that it's easier to see and understand versus putting it at the end of tables.
So, so where it says in the footnote, "One non-eliminated name plate not exceeding two square feet in area and attached domain dwelling shall be permitted," is that in 1.2?
No.
No, but that's under home occupation, I believe, is where it's at.
So, so it's not 1.2?
Yeah, it got moved other places, and it's undersigned, I think, or it might have put it undersignedage, but I tried to put a lot of that stuff in the air. Yeah, I think it's under signage, because there's also some of that that went to the home occupation section, because traditionally, a home, you know, a barber shop or whatever in your house is a home occupation, uh, type of thing. It, it's almost like an accessory commercial unit, just put that plug in there, uh, in that. But a lot of that hasn't been deleted, and, you know, that it's in there, it's just been put in a more appropriate place.
I'll take you where you moved it somewhere, but it's, it's kind of hard going back and forth, back and forth.
Right. But that's a home occupation, uh, signage allowance is what that is, which is pretty typical most places. And that's why it's, it's for any home occupation, not e, not just a barber shop. So even if you have your little tax service, you get your little sign you can put out there.
I had the old zoning code, I had this zoning code, and I was getting dizzy going back and forth.
But Leroy asked, Leroy asked a solid question, which brings up a legitimate concern, is that how do we know, without it being mapped, where this stuff that's being deleted is being added to?
Well, I guess I can go back and make references in there.
I mean, that's a pain in the butt.
Well, that's honestly the only way to do it.
There you could put an asterisk on stuff that's been moved, you want the rest of it to be deleted.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I guess the simple answer is, if you literally lead, read this through, you'll get to a point where that information shows up. I mean, you know, I, I, and I don't mean to be.
No.
Mean about it, but, yeah, yeah.
Well, hopefully, you're going to help people walk through this when they come in.
Oh, absolutely.
I just want to make sure it's in there somewhere.
Yeah.
Are typical or telecommunications towers to be only by special permission or special use in the A2, you mean?
It depends on zoning districts. Our ordinance was what I call a anti-cell tower ordinance. That's why I completely rewrote it. It was done in the early 2000s, when cell towers were come out, uh, first coming about, and they were going to be the end to society as we know it. So most ordinances were written to essentially prohibit them or putting them in places that they didn't make sense. Since that time, we obviously know that, you know, it's not as bad. So in most commercial industrial zoning districts, there are permitted use. In some residential, there are special use permit. A lot of times, they try to keep them out of the single-family areas. And then ag areas, because of the size of the properties, a lot of times are permitted uses. But maybe special use permits for some of the, like our suburban district, which is generally closer to residential areas.
Not going to make that.
And they're not as a truth.
Yeah, no, that's it. They're, they're more of your, if you want to say, monopoles, or not the big guy wire tires and that, so. Did that answer your question? Okay.
On page thirty-one. Thirty-seven, if you're looking at the back.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
Minimum width, a hundred feet for A1 and seventy-five feet for A2. These old ordinance used to distinguish minimum width at the front of the property. This new one doesn't distinguish, it just says, "Minimum width a hundred feet," doesn't say at the front of the property. So what if you've got an odd-shaped lot, and it's a hundred feet across in the back of it, but it's not a hundred feet across in the front?
Oh, we can just put minimum frontage.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that's what you mean, the front?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, that would work for me. Because like in a cul-de-sac where they're fanned out, they could be all different.
Yeah.
The front is what you're talking about.
No, right, yeah, it's the frontage.
Same thing on building setbacks. We've deleted, uh, front major road and front minor road.
Yes.
The greater seventy-five feet from center line or twenty-five feet from the lot line. I guess in the old days, and, and remember, I started planning forty years ago, so that's the old days. A lot of times, in newly developed areas, the road is, um, normally not wide to start with. So then you have to come back as it develops, and you get more, uh, urban development, you have to come back and buy right-of-way to widen that road, because you've got too much traffic now, because this rural area is all of a sudden developing. And when you make them set the back, the, the greater of seventy-five feet from the center line or twenty-five feet from the lot line, um, you don't have to buy those. If, if they're too close, when you want to widen the road, you want to buy more easement, you've got houses where you want to buy easement. And I, that's what I thought the purpose of those front major road and front minor road setbacks were for.
I guess I look at it, why we're, why we even bothering with setbacks based off of center lines that, why don't we just have it like most places where it's twenty-five feet from your front property line, period? The problem with center lines is.
Center of the road?
Well, yeah, the problem with center lines is the same thing. That center line could change, who knows? Because if you got, if you got twenty-five feet of right-of-way, and it, you know, you go to the center of that versus fifty feet to the se, you know, and that, that changes. I don't know, I, I, traditionally, you don't use center lines or right-of-ways, you use property lines for setbacks, because that's something that's set.
Country people do, because what happens, okay, say if you've got a, a twenty-foot right, right-of-way. What's, what's typical for a section line road?
Twenty-four. Is that a right-of-way or a pavement?
Right-of-way.
Probably sixty-six.
He, is that your line? Okay.
It's in this guy.
Okay. But, but traditionally, in more rural developments, you try to push the houses away from the road in case it develops, and now all of a sudden, you've got a, a more highly-developed area, and you need a more major road. If the houses are sitting too close to the road, you can't widen that road, because you have to buy or buy a house out in order to widen the road. So you, you're not, you're trying to protect the corridor in case that area develops.
Right, but, no, I, I understand, but I guess I don't know of any property we have that doesn't have it.
No, I think it needs to go back.
Okay.
Because I, I mean, honestly, if you think, I mean, even when you look at, I mean, surveyors, they use center line.
Right, but I guess what I'm saying is, every property out there has a property line. So we're going to go from property line twenty-five feet in, just like it says, twenty-five feet from lot line. We don't have any property that doesn't have a lot line.
We may not currently, but what if you have somebody starting to sell off smaller division, I mean, smaller portions of their forty-acre tract?
Depending, they're going to go through either the lot split or the subdivision process. I mean, I can leave it in there, it's not that big a deal. It, it's not worth.
We, we're starting to encroach, uh, on council time.
Yeah, that's right.
I don't know how much more Leroy you have, or any of the members of the council. Maybe we need to, uh, have another workshop to finalize that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I got a stop point on page thirty-one with Leroy's question.
The only thing I want to add is, like Leroy said, I, you know, if you could take strong consideration to some of the things we talked about. So I have an idea, because obviously, I can react accordingly to get provisions in the code and, and have that for review. So again, if there's some of those ideas that we talked about that you would think would be good, uh, let me know.
Okay.
And I'd like to point out, I'm not being critical of Dan, this is a top job.
Oh, it's a very tough, you know that.
And he's doing a good job. And I'm not only looking at his changes, but I'm looking at the old ordinance to see if there's anything that needs to be addressed as well. And so a lot of mine are housekeeping-type things. So I don't want anybody to think that my questions are critical of him. You only do this two years, and we need to do it the best we can.
But I do think the things you brought up in the video are solid, and we need to consider them sooner than later, so Dan can change them.
Absolutely.
Because all of that makes sense.
Absolutely.
All right, good.
And with that, I'll kind of start working on some of that.
Perfect, all right. So I'm enjering our, uh, our work.